All right, I would like to call to order the board meeting for Columbia Heights Public Schools for Tuesday, November 23rd. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, can you do the roll call, please?
Grandlin?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
And Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We'll move on to the agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Starting first with the approval of agenda. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Palmer?
Second.
Lewis? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements. On November 25th and 26th, Thursday and Friday, there will be no school. December 14th, Tuesday at 6:00 PM, there will be a school board work session. December 14th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, will be a regular school board meeting in the community room. December 23rd through January 2nd, there is no school. And on Tuesday, January 4th at 5:30 PM, there will be the school board organizational meeting here in the community room. Moving on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, is there any correspondence?
Vice Chair Mueller, at this time, there's no correspondence.
Thank you. Next, we will have citizens, excuse me, communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks and ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anybody who would wish to speak to the board this evening? Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, which includes the personal report. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Grandlin?
Second.
Seconded by Lewis. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we will have our acknowledgement of contributions. This is a resolution, so I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion to approve. Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B dot zero two permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and may apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $50. The detailed background is a monetary donation of $50 who was made to Valley View Elementary by Kathy Doge and Chuck Cook for the books, for books and student clothing needs in honor of Karma Doge. Total fiscal year 2021 to 2022 monetary contributions to date is $5,499 and no cents. I get a motion?
So moved.
Palmer?
Second.
Seconded by Grandlin. Any discussion?
As always, we are so incredibly grateful for the generosity and the consideration of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Agreed. As this is a resolution, Member Palmer, can you please do the roll?
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandlin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to discussion, reports and information items. Reports from members of the school board. Laura, would you like to start, please?
Yes, I actually have a very brief report. I attended the work-study session last week, and then I had a very lovely, I guess you could almost say brunch, with our new appointed school board member Brenna, who is actually with us this evening. So thank you for joining us. It was a lovely time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Well, unfortunately, I was not able to make the work session last week. Just waiting for those, you know, COVID results, which came back negative thankfully. But you can never be too careful, so I'm sad I missed it. However, I've been really busy. I've had lots and lots of conversations with staff and students and family members. I've had multiple conversations with the superintendent, which has been pretty fantastic. And I also had an opportunity to join with the Virtual Heights 5th graders as they were talking about government and elected officials, and so I was able to talk to them a little bit about what it was like to be on school board and what the role was. So it was pretty great.
Awesome. Really busy.
Thank you.
Molly?
Thank you. I had a chance to see the high school play. Also had a meeting with Superintendent Stenbik, a meeting with Member Mueller, who attended the work session, and then immediately following, we had the community engagement session with our new student representative, which was really nice. Excited to have her and her energy on this, working with us. I also had a chance to stop in at Turkey Bingo at Highland last week, which was fun to revisit the elementary school energy. And then was at the football banquet last night. Typically wouldn't mention something like that, but I think it's worth noting that I learned that Coach Townsend was actually named Sub-District Coach of the Year, which was pretty exciting. So congratulations to him. And like all of you, I've had lots of conversations with staff, students, community members, and parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Leaving that next to me, I also, like Molly, attended the high school play Clue onstage. I thought it was absolutely fantastic. They did, I laughed so hard my stomach hurt. So they did an amazing job on that. Last week, I attended the chair meeting prior to the work session, as well as the work session. Like Member Lewis, we had the subcommittee on community engagement. Loved having our student representative there. That was a fantastic experience. We'll talk more about that under Board Topics. I attended the city council meeting last night and gave an update as the liaison to the city council and attended the chair meeting just prior to this meeting. Also had conversations with Member Lewis, Chair Severson, and Superintendent Stenbik, and many students and community members as well. And that is it for me. We will move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Stenbik?
Yep, I have just a brief report tonight. We're really just monitoring local COVID case rates right now. We're working on scheduling additional opportunities for vaccines for both children and adults. And I would just like to say on behalf of the admin team that our hearts go out to students, staff, and community members who are struggling with the loss of loved ones due to COVID right now. I had communication with Chair Severson, Vice Chair Mueller, Member Lewis, Member Grandlin, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to our Indian education update. And we have Superintendent Stenbik and Valerie Larson, our American Indian Education Mentor.
And of course, I'm not on the Zoom to share it, now am I? Momentarily. Yep.
Brief pause.
Yep. Of course. And I see Miss Bell on there. There she is. Chair Severson, Vice Chair Mueller, hello there. You're in the chair tonight. Hello, members of the board. This evening, it's an honor to have Ms. Valerie Larson with us. She's our School District American Indian Education Mentor and really facilitates and coordinates the American Indian Education Program in the district. So we're here this evening to provide a program update, as we do annually. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And the American Indian Education Program in Columbia Heights really encompasses all of our core values. This is an informational update. There'll be no governance. So the American Indian Education Program is guided by a parent committee that reviews the goals and metrics of the program, activities, and budget priorities. This year, we're also very fortunate to have two junior co-chairs. So we've got two parent co-chairs and then two junior co-chairs, and they're both juniors at the high school. So there are five areas of the American Indian Education Program requirements. So the area one is support post-secondary preparation for American Indian pupils. The goal, American Indian, and this goal was determined by the parent committee with input of the students. So American Indian students in Columbia Heights Public Schools are prepared for post-secondary opportunities. The metric that we'll be using is to maintain six years in the running, 100% American Indian graduation rate. And then to discuss the strategy, Valerie Larson.
Thank you, Xena. Good evening, school board members. I'm proud and happy to be here. We really have a focus with the American Indian Education Program on literacy through culture. I tend to meet with groups of students to provide supplemental literacy development. We buy a lot of books that are written about and by American Indian authors. So that provides the cultural content. We also, I also spend a lot of the time monitoring American Indian student grades. And then I provide the resources and support to individual students as needed. So for example, if they need, if they're, you know, not doing so well in the class, maybe I ask them to go to the, you know, after-school study program, or, you know, we figure out a way to make sure that they, we meet their needs.
I'm just going to add, Val, that you can see in the photo, this student has a beautifully beaded eagle feather. He was bestowed this eagle feather at our school powwow. And all of this is organized by Val, and it's just quite an honor. The second area is support the academic achievement of American Indian students. So the goal is that the students show typical and aggressive growth in literacy skills. And we use the Fast Bridge Assessment to monitor that. And Val, you mentioned about literacy, some of the literacy work that you do already. I don't know if you wanted to add?
I think for a lot of the students, when they're, when they come to see me or when I invite them into the office to speak with them, and I notice that their grades are a little low, or are slipping, I always ask them, are they reading books? Are they finding books that they enjoy reading in the library? And it's amazing to me that not many students read books or have books accessible to them at their homes. And so I try to help them. I've got a lot of books in my office, and I try to help them pick out, you know, something that is of interest to them, that they might be interested in. That's, you know, maybe it's about history or whatever, or it could just be like, you know, a fiction book. And then we invite them back in within a couple of weeks to talk to them again about what they read, what they learned, what they understood, and if they have any questions for me, and if they'd like to pick another book to read. And that seems to work real well because I'm not asking them like personal questions or, you know, I'm not getting into their space, but we're talking about books. And that's, as you know, that's something that's a lot easier to talk about than to talk about things that are going on in your life sometimes. So that's it.
All right. The third area is making curriculum relevant to the needs, interests, and cultural heritage of American Indian pupils. So the goal is that Columbia Heights Public Schools Social Studies and English Language Arts curriculum is relevant to the needs, interests, and cultural heritage of American Indian students. And this is, the metric is Satisfaction Survey of Parents and Students. And we've got multiple strategies in this area. And working with the Department of Teaching and Learning and with the collaboration with the parent committee is that the parent committee has already given input on curriculum and will continue to review curriculum this year to give more input. But they were, the parent committee was really instrumental in helping us launch the American Indian Studies course at the high school, for example, and the American Indian Trunks at the elementary level. Val, did you want to add anything to the strategy?
I think one of the things I'd like to add is that the Teaching and Learning Department has, you know, has opportunities for teachers to, you know, gain knowledge, more knowledge about how to work with Indian students and how best to meet their needs. And so like if I get those, I usually get those because being American Indian, of course, I get them over on my desk, and then I send them on over to the Teaching and Learning Department so that they can look at them and decide if there's, you know, find if there's any teachers that are interested in learning them. As with COVID now, a lot of these opportunities are on, you know, are on Zoom rather than in person. And I think that really helps a lot of us that probably, I'm probably not going to get up in the evening after I work all day and go to the university for a class. But if it's on Zoom, I might be able to, you know, handle it. And I think that's the same with a lot of the non-native teachers at school. So there's been a lot more opportunity for them to learn from American Indian educators, you know, about how to work best with American Indian students.
Thank you. Area four, and here you can see our two junior, you know, committee members, co-chairs. Area four, provide positive reinforcement of the self-image of American Indian pupils. So the goal, American Indian students in Columbia Heights report feeling culturally supported by school staff. And this will be, there'll be a student survey. And then there's multiple activities. You know, Val has just been really instrumental in in launching and facilitating and coordinating parent and family activities. Val, did you want to mention a few of those?
Sure. Right now, because of COVID, obviously, we're not able to have a lot of the different activities. But in the past years, we were able to do, like bring in somebody that works with the quarries at Pipestone, Minnesota. And he brought in pieces of pipe stone and showed them what they, how to carve, how they carve, like, you know, like little animals and also pipes, and talked a lot about carving pipe stone. We've had people come in and do storytelling. We've gone, we've had, we used to be able to have trips, you know, like out to like the Sugar Bush and places like that. But it hasn't really been happening lately. But one thing that I do is, I was telling everybody, I've been doing a lot of speaking this week in some of the elementary schools, and I was inviting everybody. I know people are really busy around this time of the year, but I was inviting everybody to, there's a powwow at the American Indian Center on Friday, Thursday night and Friday, and it's free, and if people want to come, it's, everybody's welcome. So, you know, things like that, I just try to make sure that people, you know, people know that there's activities happening in the community. And I also talk to this, you know, to let the teachers know that this is happening. Most of them just want to wait for the Columbia Heights powwow in the spring, so.
And the last area is-
Which was really big last year.
It was, and here's a photo of it. Good segue.
Yeah.
Area five, the last area, develop intercultural awareness among pupils, parents, and staff. So the goal is that American Indian students and family members report feeling culturally supported by the school staff and interconnected to the heritage and local American Indian community. So the committee drafted this year and a value, like a summative evaluation tool after each parent and family activity that we do. So getting feedback and then getting ideas from not just the committee members, but all of the families that show up. And again, Val mentioned multiple opportunities that we offer. Sometimes it's Saturday mornings in the fax room cooking fry bread, which is amazing. You know, sometimes it's in this room where they're learning how to sew regalia. So lots of different activities that take place.
In fact, last week, the social studies teacher had the students make fry bread. And so she helped with that. So, you know, it's becoming more than just me, which I love. I think that's great because obviously I can't be everywhere at once.
Lastly, just a snapshot of what the budget looks like. The state budget is down a little bit due to the drop in enrollment last year. The federal budget is up a little bit due to Valerie Larson collecting the federal forms and making those connections with families. This is, this amount of money is only a portion of the money that is spent to support this program. So general fund dollars are also used to support the program. And that was the last slide.
And I just want to thank you all for having us. And I thank you very much for having a position like the American Indian Mentor at Columbia Heights School. I really enjoy, you know, filling that position. And I'm, you know, I like to think that I'm helping a lot of, a lot of the students and actually engaging with a lot of the staff as well. So thank you very much for having this position and allowing me to be the one leading it. I appreciate it. Mi guaych.
Mi guaych.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Larson and Superintendent Stenbik. Does anybody have any questions?
I only have one. First of all, I love everything that you're, everything that you're doing. I love this program. I am so incredibly proud when I, when I see these updates as we're, we're really trying to do what's best for our students. And anything, I mean, it's so good for, you know, particularly our American Indian students, but for our community at large to be able to participate and really, you know, have an understanding of culture and so on. But I do have one question, and I know I've asked it multiple times. Are we ever going to consider any type of language as far as any type of a language course?
That's really difficult because obviously there are more than one language spoken among our students at the school. One thing that I did, so I can't answer that very effectively because I don't know how that would work. I do, you know, tell people when there are language tables, when there's language courses offered elsewhere. Some of our families actually go to the American Indian Center, and they do have language courses there. The other thing that we did last year is we purchased some CD.
Some language programs, comprehensive language programs that had books and then also audio programs, and then the families check those out.
Oh, that's fantastic.
So that's available to families and parents.
Yeah, I think that that's another piece, too, that we want to make sure that we're not missing. Thank you.
Any other questions? I know Valerie obviously lost connection, I think. So, any other questions? All right. Great. Thank you. Next, we will move on to new suspended, deleted courses. We've got a group of folks here with us. Director of Teaching and Learning Tara Takrol, Executive Director Bondo Niambwe. Looks like we've got some of the principals and teaching and learning staff. So turn it over. Director Takrol and Director Niambwe.
No, what happened, my computer just quit. So I'm good. It's just dropping.
Thank you.
So, thanks.
Bye. Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Evening, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. We definitely have a lineup for you tonight. We have our principal of our high school, Todd Nguyen, principal of Columbia Academy, Dwayne Burkus, our executive director, Niambwe, our teaching and learning coordinators, Emily and Carrie. And our mission in Columbia Heights of all belong, all succeed, in creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. And as we think about proposing new courses, we really focused on the core values of excellence and innovation. Tonight, we're here with an informational presentation, and I'll be returning on December 14th, asking for approval for the presented courses for the 2022-2023 school year. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Coordinator Gardner.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. I'm pleased to be here with you to share some of our new proposed courses. At the elementary level, we actually do not have any recommendations to add, suspend, or delete courses. So the first course we are proposing would be a pilot in spring of 2022. Would be Project Lead the Way Green Architecture, which would be a course for students to learn how to apply green concepts to architecture and construction. This would support the Project Lead the Way pathway that already exists at Columbia Academy and would also complement the STEM focus at North Park School for Innovation. There would be no additional costs or changes to staffing for this course as the instructor has already gone through the necessary training to be able to teach the course. The next course we are proposing is Avid Six. Avid Six has long been kind of the missing link in our Avid programming. So we are avid school-wide in our elementary schools. And then we have the Avid elective from 7th grade through 12th grade. And although many of our Columbia Academy teachers have been trained in Avid strategies, we've not had an Avid Six elective course. So that is what we are proposing. And again, there's no additional cost to add Avid Six, but it may change staffing of electives. It is still doable with our current staffing. And with that, I will pass it to Principal Burkus to share more about new courses in the ELA department.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. We have always tried hard to live up to the, to our mantra in Columbia Heights to provide worlds of opportunities to our students. So one of the things we've been looking at is how we can complement our current selection of electives. And one area that we know we have interest with students who do this on their own, they'll come and show us their poems or their short stories. We do have students that like to be creative with their writing. So one of the areas that we would like to, when we have the students and the staff, we would be looking for adding creative writing through our ELA department. We currently don't have any ELA electives. We have our required courses. So this would be a first for us, and, but I think it would be one way to, again, interest, find an interest of students and develop those much-needed literacy skills. In addition, we have always wanted to try to complement what we know are electives that are popular and very effective at the high school. One of those, of course, is the journalism program at the high school, which has won many awards and done amazing work for a long time. We would like to offer an elective course in journalism at Columbia Academy where we could get students interested, introduce them at a very beginning level to what journalists do, give them an opportunity to practice it and produce their own middle school version of a school paper. We'd obviously, as an admin team, need to work with them to support that kind of project. But again, an area that we think there would be lots of interest and would help to develop those literacy skills as well. Music Appreciation Two would complement our current music appreciation class, which has really expanded this year with more sections of it. It's one way to make sure that all of our students, whether they're, if they're not, I should say, in choir or band, are still having the opportunity to learn how to really appreciate music at a deeper level. That it's a discipline, that there's a science to it, but that it also reflects culture and history. We have seen the kind of engagement and joy that kids get from this class currently. And we'd like to develop that out to make sure that they only, that they get more than just one dose of that. They have the opportunity to take a second level of that as well. So we'd be working with Teaching and Learning and our music department to develop that course for our students in the years ahead.
Good evening, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbik. I am here to present an update to the English Learners Department. No new courses that we're adding, but just a change of names. In the past, we've referred to the support- In the past, we've referred to the support classes, EL Support 1, 2, 3, and 4. And by the recommendation of the EL teachers, they wanted to bring a name that has more definition and give more meaning to the support class. So the change will be, from now on, we're going to refer to that EL support class as Academic Language 2 and Academic Language 3 and 4. And these changes do not affect any of the content, but simply allow students, families, and staff to better understand the focus of the classes.
Good evening, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. The course I'm going to speak on tonight is a Spanish elective we hope to pilot in the fall of 2022. This course was driven out of a need to support the group of students who take AP Spanish as 11th graders, many of which are heritage Spanish speakers, speaking Spanish at home. This course would give them the opportunity to earn more college credit beyond AP. We are working in collaboration with Anoka Ramsey Community College or other early college partnerships to provide this credit. The course would focus on historical, cultural, and linguistic consequences of the colonization of the Americas, use authentic literature, and be taught entirely in Spanish.
Good evening, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. I'm pretty excited about a couple other offerings as well that are just changes. We are looking at updating our catalog to support new standards in the arts and the art pathways. And so change titles and update the description of performing art classes and update course descriptions in visual arts. So like Principal Burkus had just said, we too have something similar where students could earn credit without taking choir or band because of their love or interest in music. And I'm really excited about the next two classes that we're talking about here. This is a name change, and then we're going to add some different content to the courses. This is a 12th grade college workshop. And this stemmed from student need and conversations with students to their teachers. And teachers were motivated to present this. And so they presented it to our staff, and we're really excited. Or they presented it to the admin team. And so we're excited about this. This is a 12th grade college workshop, and we'll talk about that on the next slide. But it really, there we go. And so 12th graders have an opportunity to take this class first semester. And it's really geared for non-avid students. And it's for students who would like to look at taking a four- or two-year college course. And then with that, we're going to talk about resume polishing, college visits, application workshop, data tracking, financial aid, literacy, FASL workshops, data tracking, college transitions, and really just getting kids prepared for what college could look like versus just studying for test prep. I do want to note, though, as I listed some of those things, that this does not take the place of some of our community engagement that we have with our parents. We do have a college application night. It was a smash hit this year. We had almost 100 students there, as well as some family members. And so that was really engaging, and that would still stay as part of what we do, as well as our FASL form application that we are going to be filling out with parents coming up here in December. So it won't take the place, but this does, and. And then the spring semester, this is geared more towards 11th graders. And these, once again, will be non-avid students. And the reason we say non-avid students is because, as you know, the Avid, one of the goals in Avid is to have all of our kids ready for college and to access colleges. And so they do a lot of the same work, but this is for another group of students who would not be an Avid. And this is really for students who would like to take the SAT and then also look at that four-year university path. And so you can read the other bullets that come along with that as well.
Great, thank you. Oh, not Mary. Yes?
I did it, yay. I wanted to say, first of all, I'm kind of excited as I'm, this is the last year my children will be in elementary school, so there's no changes there, but there's a lot of exciting things happening happening at Columbia Academy and the high school. So I'm pretty excited to see all of that. I think, hearing a little bit about the Spanish, you know, when I took Spanish in high school, sort of going into college and then having it all of a sudden be completely taught in Spanish was a lot harder than I thought. And so I think that it's really a great way to cheer students up for success in post-secondary, to have that there. So I think that that's really, really pretty exciting. I'm also super excited that the middle school's going to be getting a newspaper. So, so many exciting things happening. And really, thanks so much to the work of the district and the staff and the students and everybody working together to make these wonderful changes happen. So, kudos, it's a lot of really fun stuff, so, thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else? Great, thank you for your time. Next, we will move on to the secondary strategic roadmap. And we have Executive Director Bondo Niamwe and Todd Nguyen, principal at Columbia Heights High School, and Dwayne Burkus, Columbia Academy principal, joining us.
Good evening, Vice Chair Mueller and members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. I am here tonight with Principal Burkus and Principal Nguyen to present the secondary schools' building vision current. Our mission, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. In our presentation tonight, all the core values will be encompassed. And this is an informational update and no governance question. And this is just a picture of our strategic roadmap to show you the direction that we're going into. And I'm going to pass it on to Principal Burkus, who's going to start us. After his presentation, there will be questions, and then we'll move on to Principal Nguyen.
Sorry, Bondo, I'm not seeing the presentation. If you can share.
Can we switch it? Dwayne, one second.
Technology all around today for us.
It is, well, it's a hybrid. It's more hybrid than we've been in the past, and so this is a little different.
Executive Director Niamwe, do you want me to share my screen?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Director Tuckrell and Director Niamwe. Yes, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. Pleased to be here with you tonight to talk about our strategic roadmap and our scorecard here with you. I won't go through each line as last week with the elementary principals, I will. But I will try to get some highlights here on each of these slides. So as we know, this past year, one of the things that we discovered was how you can teach when you're at home. And so teacher absences went down to almost nothing. And it was one of the good things that came out of it. Also, we did struggle more, though, with attendance with students. As you can see, the last two years with COVID were tougher for us. But many did, and it sure is good to see them back and attending school higher now this year as we are back together. I did want to just mention quickly that our mental health screener was not, we had half of our students at home even at the end of the school year. We were not able to do the kinds of things that we normally do to screen large numbers of students. But any student that we were concerned about, that we had a chance to talk with and/or their parents to discover that there were concerns, our social worker and our school psychologist continued to provide those mental health screeners to make sure that we were helping those students who really were in need. Finally, I would say on this one that really, I believe that the teaching and learning, as you can see from the first line and the last line here, really focused their PD in areas that served us well, which was to help our teachers stay well and to help us to address the trauma that we knew and continue to know many of our students had experienced. It was good to see that our students still felt good to be part of Columbia Academy, felt like their teachers were still important to them. So our satisfaction report was still high, even with us being virtual almost entirely for most students most of the year. Suspensions, whether that was in school or out, obviously, there was so much less of that because we weren't all in one place together. Kids were at home for most of the year, so it was much lower. And that was, again, one of those things that came because of COVID. Another area that really impacted us due to COVID in this past year was just the, and this was a good thing, a great thing, was that we learned how to really use our learning management system, SchoolAG. So our teachers worked very hard to be very systematic in their approach to that so that it was organized similarly across all classrooms, that students knew how to find things, how to access what they needed. So it was, I think, one of the best things that came out of a tough year was that we really became proficient as a whole staff across our building with the use of an online learning system, SchoolAG, a program that we continue to use this year as part of the learning system at Columbia Academy. I think here, you know, in the year with COVID, all of the standardized testing that we were used to, really that took a major hit. Again, looking for positives, looking for highlights and all this, I think one of those, again, was that we've always known that it's important to not just talk about our students jumping over the bar that has been set, but are they growing? So if they come to us and they have a long way to go, are we helping them on that journey? Are we getting them to grow at a satisfactory level across, you know, a whole school year? So the FAST is a measure of that. We did not reach our goal of, that we wanted to with it. Again, it was a tough year, but I think the focus, the focus being growth, and again, this year, on really making sure our students grow from wherever they are at, has been a good thing. A way for us to really measure the impact that we are having on students. So our hope would be that we will see that improve greatly now that we are all back together and students are tuned in and learning. I think I'd say this, for communication at Columbia Academy, there is, of course, the program parent view that we encourage our parents to sign up with. But our approach has been for many years now that we will also push out aggressively. And so that means that we send out an email on Fridays with grades and missing reports. We communicate to families each Saturday with a newsletter, and we communicate to parents each Sunday evening with a phone call so that we don't have to hope that teachers, or I'm sorry, that parents are clicking into Parent View and finding this information. But we know that we're pushing it out to them on a regular basis. So we always do want parents to have and know about Parent Views, so we do communicate that to them. We have found, though, with some of our parents at least, sending it out to them seems to be a better bet that they will actually get the information and hear it or read it. So events were tougher this year, this past year. Events, bringing people together, just didn't happen as much. We've always had our, an end of middle school celebration that's been looked forward to by parents, one of the biggest events of the year there. But we didn't do it this year. And we didn't do our academic night in the middle of the year, which is also a big event. So lots of our school play, our, so many things, our concerts, so many things were canceled. So we're looking forward to getting those back up and running this year, but there were so many fewer due to COVID. The one bright spot, again, in this, though, is one way that I found, for myself at least, to kind of make up for some of that was actually using the mandatory forms. In this case, sometimes it was the Student Benefits Form, and going out to parents and making those visits to them to say, "Hey, I've got something here that needs to be signed. Could I drop it by?" And having a conversation outside their home. It wasn't inside, and it was with masks, but it gave me a sense of connection with families in a difficult year to have that. So, not sure if we'll be able to do that in the busy, busy world that we are in again with kids at school this year. But that did help us, I think, to really boost the percentage of students at Columbia Academy whose forms had been signed and filled in by their parents. So again, we are proud of our teams here, the PLC work that we're doing with the help of the leadership of teaching and learning through common planning time, through commitment to identifying those grade-level standards that we are going to insist on students learning and really making that the foundation of our school. And so I think both of those, we were able to further in a very difficult year. And again, I would say with the assistance of teaching and learning, we would not have been able to do that without them. So a big thank you to them with that. So our goals were that we would have students increase by 5% on the state accountability test in reading. Obviously, we had to go all the way back to 2018, 19 to find a baseline. So we've been at this sort of interrupted educational system for a while now. And so I think this kind of is a good reminder to me that, yeah, we have to go back a ways to find a year where we had, you know, a full set of learning and test scores. And of course, that, we did give the MCAs, but it was to a small number of kids. And we will be working hard to get our kids back on track to meet these goals of proficiency. And the same thing for math. We talked about our students, again, reaching that 5% increase, students meeting, jumping over that bar from the 2018, 19. and students meeting, jumping over that bar from the 2018, 19 baseline on the MCAs. So finally, just some pictures and maybe just kind of bringing us to the present. What are we doing now? I feel like if I could name it in just a couple of words, it's we're trying to rebuild community. Our students lost that largely, I think, when they were home, when they were alone, when they weren't part of something bigger than their immediate family on a daily basis. Now they're with 700 other kids and what does that feel like? What are your responsibilities, not just to yourself, but to all those around you? And so we're relearning some of those things and we're rebuilding it. But it's fun, it's so exciting to see the, the excitement, the joy in our students' faces to be together again. And it's challenging, to say the least, to, to remind students that with all of the fun and excitement that comes with being together, community has responsibilities as well, accountability. It has things that we need to do. So these pictures though show that I think we're making great gains from where we were last year to where we want to be with that strong sense of community both within our schools and without. And thank you. That was it for me.
Do you have the high school as well?
Yeah. Did you want questions in between or, or at the end of the two?
Yeah, I think we do in between. Does anybody have any questions for Principal Burkes at Columbia Academy?
All my questions were asked and answered.
Yeah. Great. Thank you, Principal Burkes.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Doin, we're going to pass it on to you.
Good evening again, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. This is a little bit unique in that I'm reporting on last year's data. And as you know, I wasn't the principal last year. So what I did is I sat with my administrative team and our district departments and had some conversations around the results. And so we've just highlighted a few and so I could probably echo almost everything that Principal Burkes had just said. But in the first strategic direction, A, some of the highlights was the licensed staff participating in wellness and professional development as well as limited teacher absences. We can greatly account the COVID, this is, this is a result of COVID. For school climate, once again, I believe our, our teachers do a great job building relationships with our kids. And so therefore our, our kids have a great sense of reporting satisfaction with our school climate. We had lowest out of school suspension probably ever as well as in-school suspension last year. For strategic direction B, improving students' academic achievement and career and college readiness. We highlighted B1, which teacher utilization of the learning management systems as Principal Burkes spoke to. You know, there, there is always something positive that comes out of everything that we go through in life. And I'd say this is also one of those things as far as education across the board is our teachers rolled up their sleeves regardless of year one or year 30 as a teacher. And they adapted and adjusted and now they've continued to adapt and will continue to use these learning management systems. Also speaking to the PLC, providing support for our students with the families as far as the, the preparing the kiddos for that. We highlighted that to show the differences between the years. So even with COVID, we definitely weren't where we want to be, but there was some intentional work and some families did come in along with teachers to have some, and I'll, I'll share that in another slide, but there was some prep classes that, that happened or seminars as well as some testing that happened live at the high school. And that was, I'd call that very brave by our families to send their kids in and our teachers to be in the building to offer those services for kids. So although I wasn't there at that time, I'm very proud of our staff and our students and the parents for understanding the seriousness of, of high stakes testing. Our advanced placement course exam participation still wasn't where we wanted it to be, but it still got done for, for many of our students. As far as communication goes with our students, families and community, ParentView was something that was pushed. It remained stagnant in the still high concern area. And so I've wrapped some goals around this this year. Hopefully our families feel like they've been communicated to at least weekly. But that's really where I put the highlight is just it stayed the same. I did that for my own use so I can use that for goals for this next year, upcoming year. Strategic direction, improving our daily interaction with students, families and community. This is one of the slides that I was talking about. You know, we had our students had an opportunity to come in and do some tests as well. And it ended up being our graduation was one of the unique things that happened for the engagement. I don't know how many other schools across Minnesota had graduation being a live event. And cheers to Columbia Heights for being brave and doing an outdoor graduation that it sounds like it was a great success. So this was a real highlight of, of the high school last year from administration and from some of the students that I've heard from that had siblings. You, you just save a lot of money when you don't have kids in the building as far as the daily consumables and things like that. So we did highlight that, that that was also a result of COVID though. So the school goals last year was communication with the families. Course alignment through PLCs increased 10th grade and 11th grade math scores and reading scores by 5%. And there's your celebration. At the end, the kids that are happy, they, they did it. And it probably felt really, really good to, to graduate with your friends, especially for some of our kiddos that have been here since kindergarten in this community. A culminating event like this, you couldn't have anything better.
Questions?
I do have a couple. Just real quick, going back to A2 school climate. I know this has been brought up before, but when we talk about suspensions, can you talk about how you're measuring that data? Because I do think it's misleading and kind of misunderstood, I guess.
Can you give me more of what you're asking? I'm sorry.
Yep. So it's, so under A2, I'll go back to it. Let's see. When we talk about how we've had the lowest rate of suspensions, that it's not just because kids have been at home, the timeframe that we are measuring?
Oh, the timeframe. Well, last school year, so the previous school year, it was March to March because in 2020, March is when students went home. Last school year, I, I think was a typical school year that it was looking at the whole school year. So the quarter one, two and three, when it was largely heights from home and then also quarter four where it was hybrid or many kids, you know, many kids back on campus. I think for this metric, it's, it's the whole school year of last year. The previous year, when we left in March, that, that one only looked at March to March.
Got it.
Previous year.
Okay. So this is true data. All right.
Good question.
Thank you, Superintendent Stenvik.
Well, you weren't here.
Can I just add on that too? But knowing that a good portion of the year, students were home. So I think there's definitely always cause to celebrate this metric. We need to continue to see that as we move forward now that kids are in school.
Well, and I think the reason we highlighted that was just to make a real, and Principal Burkes had that highlighted as well in the conversation of, you know, the data is going to change when you have kids in the building. That's just the result of what happens when you put 1,100 kids in a building. And so it was highlighted and noted that it was low suspension rates.
Thank you. And then my other question, just, this is a lot more simple. Can you talk about how parent, how you're measuring parents using ParentView? Is it people that are signed up for it or is it people that are accessing it? I'm just thinking about even personally, I may have screenshots sent to me by my children because I don't want to log in. So then it's not maybe showing me as active, but I'm looking at the information. So I'm just curious about this. Like, how are we measuring that?
I believe it's a usage report. Yeah.
It, it's an actual login usage report. Bummer. All right.
You mean like how better health is like, you guys, that there's a log of how many times people like log in? Like I'm.
Never seen them. So, but I think it is how many people log in, not when they log in.
Wow.
Looking behind me at Director Hennigan's.
Duly noted. Thank you for sharing.
Cool. Well, I did.
I can help that.
But I did, I did recommend to parents in my last newsletter to have if they, because I, I have a hard time with our system in my own district where my kids go to school at. And so our kids are really good at getting on there and showing, they can show me at any time if they have a phone. So I encourage parents to utilize the kids' student view because it's the same thing. And so if parents are confused or don't know how to do it, just have them show student view.
It's kind of. That's what I'm wondering.
It's kind of the same, but it's, there's some little quirks that are different when my son pulls his up and mine up and then I'm like, why is this on mine and not on yours or vice versa? So I think they're kind of analogous, but there's some things that they don't have access to and some things we don't, correct? I'm looking for an adult here, adult.
And I'm just double checking that like, so my student logging in and sending a screenshot is not going to represent my interaction with ParentView. That's all. Okay. Thank you.
That's okay, Molly. I'd probably check in a whole bunch more, so I'll carry you.
Yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll bump up the number.
I have it.
I know you do.
I will.
No, I know.
I'll help this number along. Yes, I'll do my part. Thank you. Sorry for the distraction.
Any other questions? Thank you, Molly. Anybody else?
No. You asked mine.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Next, we'll move on to strategic direction, direction C, improving your daily interaction with students, families and communities. And we've got Director Bondo Niemwe and Kristin Stankel.
Once again, good evening, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. I am here tonight with Director Stankel to present our strategic direction C. And actually, she's supposed to be doing this part.
Very good. Well, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I am happy to be here with Executive Director Nwemwe to talk about strategic direction C, improve our daily interactions with students, families and community. Our mission for Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. This evening, similar to some of the other presentations this evening, I, I hope that you will hear all of our core values represented. Community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage and innovation. This is an informational update. There are no governance questions. So with the strategic roadmap, as I said, in that far right column, you'll see the strategic directions. We're focusing this evening on C, improving our daily interactions with students, families and community. The district operational plan metrics, excuse me, that you'll hear. So the process for us was to gather input from community, staff, students and parents to determine areas of focus for continuous improvement. The 2019, 2020 school year was our baseline year for the strategic direction. Excuse me, swallowed wrong. First, excuse me. I'm going to focus on the communications section. With C1, that, C1.1, that is our annual communication survey that is sent from our HR department to all of our staff. This past year, 99 of our staff filled out the survey. And we scored in the high concern area. So what we learned from the survey, the survey asks, how are you feeling? And how are you experiencing communication from the district level? From each of the departments within the district office? From your school, from your grade level or department team? So there's multiple levels of communication. And it's asking questions like, are you getting the kind of information that you need in order to be effective? Are you getting timely information? How are you getting the information? Some of the areas that were brought up to us were, a, a couple of people said, we don't know when people are changing positions in our district. And we really want to be aware when there's a new employee or when someone is in a new position. They also said, we want to know who is the right person in the different district office departments to go to. So in response to that, we created and we sent out to all of our staff and it's on the HeightsNet. This is the, this is the teaching and learning department. And this is what Director Tuckrell does. And this is what, you know, each of the people in each of the departments. And we sent that out in a HeightsNet recap and we also have that posted. That was a direct response to the request to have greater transparency and understanding within the organization. I just use that as an example of how we really do read these surveys and we really do respond to that. Other areas that they indicated were that we want, we want more timely, more consistent, more clear communication. And all of those are, are areas that we've been working on this year. C1.2, analysis of social engage, social media engagement. We are at vision for that, so our engagement has increased by more than 10%. And we just have, I think that we've got really great both on the district level and now also with the buildings and activities, having both Instagram and Facebook for many of those sites as well that are very active. C1.3, points of contact, pushing out to internal stakeholders by the communications department. We have 15 or more points of contact per month, so we're at vision for that. Points of contact for our external stakeholders, also 15 or more points of contact per month. We submit at least eight press releases per month to the media and that's at the baseline level. And then four of, approximately four of those gets published each month. And so that, that concludes the communication slide.
I will be reporting on measure C2, family engagement. And C2.1, again, we're looking at the usage of parents who have registered to use online tools such as CSO and others at the pre-K 5 level. And in this category, we're, we are at vision, which is an improvement. One of those strategies that we utilize to increase this participation is that last year, our homeschool liaison were offering technology training to parents who are newly arrived in the district so that they can understand how to use some of these online tools. On the C.21, parent registered for online use at the secondary level. We're at that high concern level and you've heard both principals address that concern. And C.22, parent participation, online climate survey. You know, I think we've addressed it before that it is a long survey and sometimes many parents struggle taking it. And so that's why we are at that intervention level and it's something we need to look at. And the final metrics, it's a parent sense of connectedness and engagement. At this one, you can see that many of the things, that activities that we do to engage our parent are well received and we are at vision for that category. So overall, when we look at strategic direction C and we compare that from 2020, 2021, we've made some improvement and it is pretty clear that the efforts that Director Stankel responded to and some of the interventions that we've put in place are paying off and we can see progress.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you so much for the report. Looking at the online climate survey, it says sample size based on national norm. Do you know what sort of a, I mean, I know the percentages are there, but how many? Do you have the number of how many respondents we would be looking for to, for that?
I had that, but I don't have it with me. I had that, but I don't have it with me, so we can send you that.
This has been an issue, as you can see, we've got three years worth of data.
Yep.
And so um, Director Tuckrell and a team are, have, have looked at that data and will be responding to that data because um. As Executive Director Niemwe mentioned, it's a long survey, um, so we're looking at a comparable. Survey that can get at the same information, um, but that's more accessible for parents this year.
Sounds great, I did notice that it, you know, it makes sense that there was a, a much lower response rate for, you know, the twenty twenty school year, and. I do note that it is comparable for nineteen and twenty-one, I'm just curious, so I'll, I'll be excited to see those. Those numbers, thank you.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, any other questions? Alright, thank you very much, uh, moving on, we have the fall activities update with Activities Director Jake Henderson.
Hello. Get my screen up here. Can y'all see that?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Vice Chair Mueller, uh, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, thank you for having me. Our mission, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And we should uh, cover all of our um, core values today, community, excellence, collaboration. Integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. This is uh, just an informational item today, I will have uh, be asking for the board to take action on a later item. Uh, but this is just uh, an activity update for you all. So we went over all those core values there, um, but our, our activities department has really had. Uh, an emphasis on growing our community this year, and, and we do every year, but uh, even more so this year. Um, some of the principals talked about it, uh, especially Principal Burkus, um, coming back after a year when many students were out, out of the classroom. Just uh, that emphasis on our community uh, is really important. Additionally, I shared with uh, our coaches that my focus, our focus uh, this season really needs to be on supporting our social, emotional, and physical wellbeing of our students. Creating inclusive team environments, building common team goals, and then involving uh, really our whole community, and I think um, specifically our activities department. Uh, that last bullet is, is where we've uh, we've helped our, our programs and our coaches, um, and our advisors do that. Uh, so the next slide that you see here are, are, our participation numbers, and so we've got uh, fall participation numbers. Uh, mostly at the high school and the middle school level, um, that's where we track those, um, and we have registrations for those. But you can kind of take a moment to look over the data there, um, and see how we really uh, rebounded from a COVID year. Where we had significantly less participation, and we, we've taken steps to make sure that. Our participation is, is at full strength. And you can see in, in some program areas and in some uh, sports and activities, uh, that our numbers have risen even uh, greater than pre-COVID numbers, which is really exciting to see. And what's not really represented in these numbers is uh, things like encore and high school, uh, and middle school clubs, where uh. It isn't necessarily under the activities department, but we have really teamed with uh, encore and, and clubs and principals and admin and, and. Uh, advisors, uh, just to promote those activities, um, and uh, and, and get more students involved, and that's really been our goal. In a conversation that I had with uh, Superintendent Stenvik, uh, I think it was over the summer. Just trying to, to get students involved, and, and I was specifically talking about activities numbers, um, but she brought in the horizon and, and talked about everything. And, and really, that's our goal, it doesn't have to be an activities number, but we just want students involved, um, we know that that is better for them and better for our community as a whole. Uh, so the next slides you'll see, um, I didn't put hardly any text on there, um, I know y'all like looking at pictures um, of our students. Um, and our student athletes and, and students and activities, but I'll just give a, a brief update of, of many of our programs, uh, not all of them. Just for you kind of to go through, and I'll flip through some slides with some nice pictures on them, um, of, of students actually participating. Uh, so we uh, had a new girl, or focusing on girls tennis, uh, we had a new coaching staff this year. Um, and it was a really positive seed and season, we had a lot of mixing and matching of singles and doubles and, and putting uh, student athletes in, in positions that they may not have be. Comfortable, but uh, they, they definitely grew as a tennis player, um, and as, as a student of the game. Um, and finished really well in the Tri Metro Conference, um, and I had a really great time with uh, Crystal, who's also in the activities department, you'll see in the bottom left. Tiana had an awesome match there at sections and uh, super exciting, was down, I think, two to five in the second set and had lost the first set. Um, a great comeback uh, against Totino Grace, um, eventually fell in the third set, but super exciting, right when we got there, um, that was, that was the first match that we saw, so really fun. Um, up on the, on the top, you'll see the adapted soccer team, they were a competitive team again this year, last year it was just a practice season for them. So really exciting to see uh, them competing on the floor, we co-op that with uh, Fridley and um, Saint Anthony. We're hoping for a handful more students from them, we've been hoping for that for a few years, but I know I saw several of you all, board members, um, and the. Uh, district staff at those, at those games, uh, it's really exciting, Jack, our announcer, does an awesome job. And uh, our student athletes, uh, we saw a ton of growth, um, and I remember uh, Giovanna from when I had her in the middle school, um, and just so much growth, and. Uh, she was aggressive and, and it was really fun to see um, how much she's matured and, and become a leader on that team. Uh, our girls soccer, I'm sorry, where, where we at, oh volleyball, let's go to volleyball. Um, also a really, really fun season, um, we've got a program now from six through twelve, um, so really exciting there, we've got our middle school team. If any of you went to a volleyball match at our uh, home court this uh, season, uh, it was loud, it was really exciting, we had a ton of fans there. Our team competed really well, took fifth in the conference and, and really pushed the, the top of the conference, um, in every single match, so it was, it was an exciting, exciting season, and our. C and our JV uh, levels, um, had a really strong season, so the future is really bright. Alright, I'll move on a little bit there, uh, our girls soccer team um, had, also had a great season specifically in our non-conference games. Strung together several wins and, and our coaching staff and our summer programming and just uh, our activities department has done an awesome job of. Really recruiting uh, student athletes for that team, and so we are very proud now that this is the first season we've had a, a six, or sorry, a middle school team. Specifically for uh, girls soccer, and so we've added that, um, in addition to a JV and the varsity team, so um, really excited uh, for the future, I think. I want to say we had three uh, eighth graders as starters on that team, so um, exciting stuff there too. Uh, our boys soccer team um, had a really, really fun season, they, they eventually fell in a, in a close match to our uh, to Madamidai. In a game they, they kind of controlled the ball for a lot of the game and, um, but really successful season, they won uh, their first section game against Totino Grace. Totino Grace uh, seven to one, really, really exciting game, and our head coach, uh, Hector Leone, uh, has done just a fantastic job of creating really a six through twelve program. And uh, some, some great new traditions, and he's actually a former alum of, of Columbia Heights, and, and so he's really invested and um, is, is really developing a whole program rather than just a varsity squad, so. Excited uh, for that too. Uh, football, as you see there on the bottom, uh, again, uh, I think it was um. Someone mentioned going to the banquet, but uh, it was, or it was Molly, and uh, another really fun season to watch. Uh, whole community really got behind it, we had several uh, coaches recognized two as alumni of distinction, and then uh. Coach Matt Townsend as the sub-district coach of the year, so awesome there, we have got Spencer Alvarez has been offered a scholarship from the U of M, so exciting as well. Um, additionally, I think one of my highlights of the entire fall season and, and specifically the football season is. That final uh, section game at Fridley, uh, the varsity team uh, did, did not win the game, but wow, did we represent as a community. And it was so fun to be there, Tanya Moore had uh, gotten off the bus with um. Our student bus actually, so we got a whole fan student bus to go, and she had the whole group singing and cheering as they came off, super loud. I, I have no specific numbers, but it sure looked like we doubled the size of their crowd, so it was really, it was really fun to be a part of that community and uh, super proud of um. Of just, just our community as well as the football team, obviously. Um, and then finally, uh, girls swim and dive, I was at um, for sports specifically, I was at sections last week. I think that was last week, in Richfield a couple of times, um, all of our girls um, that competed at sections, uh, set. Uh, personal best, which was fantastic, um, and then it was, it was really great to see the pole place was packed, a lot of teams there, and we had, all the way down in Richfield, we had. Students that were uh, supporting um, some of their classmates, uh, we obviously had families too, but it was just really nice to see. Um, that community and the students getting behind uh, the, those programs. I'll try to stop talking here quickly, but uh, our fall activities too, we've got um, an incredible coach in Ariel Orkut down at uh, CA. She runs both the high school as well as the middle school uh, robotics team, and she's just, if you looked at the numbers previously, done a, an amazing job of uh, building a whole program. And so I think we've got five or six teams now competing at robotics, and um, just, just a really great job of, of building that whole program. Um, and obviously, we've had uh, student athletes and, or students go to, and teams go to state in that program, but I'm really proud of what they've done down there. I think a couple of board members also mentioned our fall play clue on stage. I'm no expert in theater, but um, and our results haven't come back from uh, spotlight yet, but I would. I was so impressed with the job that they, they did and how um, funny the pro, uh, performance was, as well as how much the crowd just. Enjoyed it, and, and I got so many comments, one from a board member that was there on Friday night, um, I think she said the exact same thing, but just um, an amazing job by uh, them. And so excited for uh, one act here coming up. Uh, additionally, for our activities, we've got Destination Imagination going on at uh, Highland, um, we have the math team uh, competing, they had a, a meet on Monday, and then. Uh, we have our CA musical Willy Wonka Junior, uh, that will be performing the twelfth through the ninth of December. Uh, so excited for uh, Director Tara Lawrence, um, she always puts on a good show and has those students prepared, so really excited there. Hopefully you enjoyed some of those pictures, a lot of them have been on our Instagram, uh, and that is very much thanks to uh, Crystal, Vital Schwartz. But um, a couple of notes that I just wanted to make to, uh, our boosters, uh, our booster club has been incredibly supportive. Of everything that we've done, this fall, they gave us four hundred uh, of those little cinch gym sacks for everybody that's involved in activities, and so everybody got one of those, I see. Uh, so many students uh, walking around with those bags in the middle school and the high school, uh, with that CH, wearing it with pride, um, and just a little something for. For us to just show a little pride in and get more students excited and build that community. Additionally, they have uh, committed to donate eighty-five thousand dollars to, towards a new gym for uh, a project that we are getting started. With uh, the uh, facilities team and uh, Director Hennigan's, um, so excited about that, and, and any in-season requests, they're just so supportive of whatever our needs are. Um, and not only from the activities department, but um, from elementary schools, I know that uh, there was someone at the booster meeting. Um, on Wednesday, Wednesday, representing uh, the turkey bowling, um, and just asking for funding for help for that from the PTA, or PTO. So just uh, just thank you to uh, how supportive they are. And how supportive they've been, um, and just want to throw that out there too. Finally, there, there's really an energy, I felt there's an energy and an excitement, um, part of that is being, just being back in school, um, and kids searching for um, community, and so that has really been our focus. And, and our whole community has really responded. We've, we've intentionally been better at community, communicating, getting our message out, um, in the weekly updates, as well as um, just making sure that our message is accessible in other languages. Um, and really gone after getting students involved, and I'll tell you, the last couple of days, we've had uh, wrestling and uh, boys basketball, um, started on Monday, and. I've spent very little time working on things that I'm uh, that are on my list, but I, I've helped probably thirty families get registered, just trying to get more students involved than really. Uh, taking that time to do that, um, Crystal's been amazing in that effort as an addition to our um, activities department and um. Our focus will continue to be on just building more community, getting students involved as well as um. As, as a outside community involved in our events, um, one of those ways you see on the screen here, you see uh, some students. Um, from one of our elementary schools, we had elementary nights at uh, our events, just to um, reach out to the, the elementary schools and get um, kind of create that connection. From uh, elementary to high school, really grow that community. And, and hopefully, we're growing a sense of pride in Heights and, and, and our Highlanders. Finally, I think, you know, we're going to continue to focus on our community involvement, um, and community as a whole, um, school. But uh, there's a couple of things that we're looking to, to do, we, this winter, we're going to engage our student captains uh, in leadership discussions. And then we're going to take some next steps uh, in connecting with families, where um, I'm going to attend some reach uh, events. Uh, to hopefully can, even connect further with some of our families, so we, we've got some next steps involved, um, we're excited about the winter and um. Uh, I'll open it up for, for questions, comments, et cetera, um, and I'll be done talking, sorry, I, I know that was long-winded.
Thank you, questions, Molly?
Thank you, yeah, you definitely were long-winded, but we love it, don't get me wrong. Um, I love hearing all this, and I think that what I wa, the only reason I really said that is because it speaks to. How much knowledge you have of all of these activities and how invested you are, um, I just want to say thank you to you and Crystal. It is evident your work in the elementary, middle school, and high school, as well as the greater community, um, just getting all of our kids from arts, athletics, other activities involved and engaged. And we know that supplements their learning so much, so thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions? Laura?
Oh, no, just a comment, I, I was going to say pretty much the same thing as Molly, although not quite as eloquent. But um, I, I know that I've been receiving multiple communications every week about uh, different activities, so I really appreciate that kind of to, and, and seeing an uptick and how mu, how much participation there is. That really, really goes to just how much work has gone into this, so thank you, I think this is, this is good for our kids and it's good for our community to. You know, really have a lot going on, especially coming out of a couple of uh, really socially isolated years.
Great, anything else?
I'll make two comments, one, I'm excited for the punch cards, um, that I saw advertised um, for um, admission into the events, and I can't wait to see what happens with the super fans. So I saw those on the emails that come out, the uh, the super, super fans, student super fans. I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, I'm excited for those too.
Great.
Great. Thank you. All right, moving on to the policy first reading, I will present that. The Subcommittee on Policy reviewed and moved forward policy 501, school weapons policy. 503, student attendance, 534 meal charges. And these policies will appear on a future agenda for approval. They are currently available on the website for review and comment. Any questions on that?
Just a comment. And this was the first policy Subcommittee where we had our student, our student board member attend. So it was, it was really, really, it was, it was really fun to kind of go through. The Natty went over it very in detail about each step and how we reviewed the policy and what the purposes was. And it's a good reminder for everybody, you know, just what we're, what we're supposed to do to make sure that we're staying in line with federal and state statute and also the special needs for our community.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else? All right, we'll move on to our action items. First up is Mr. Henderson is back for this Minnesota State High School League Foundation Form A application. Looks like there is a resolution.
Yeah, that, I will share my screen again, but that name is long-winded as well. Can you all see that?
No, we just see you.
Oh, really? Maybe I didn't click share screen. I apologize. Here we are. Got it now? Excellent. Thank you. Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Senbik, thank you for bringing me back. Creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed is our mission. The core values that we will, we will hit on today briefly. Our community, excellence, collaboration, integrity and respect. So I will be asking the board to act today involving the Minnesota State High School League Foundation Grant. I presented information to the board last week, November 16th, on the foundation grant. Some of that information here is available on your screen. But in summary, the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting and funding to assist schools, oh, sorry, extracurricular participation by high school students in athletics and fine arts programs. So assisting schools in promoting, recognizing and funding those things. The grant funding is determined by free and reduced lunch number in the ninth through 12th grade of the high school and unduplicated free and reduced participants in those activities. So my recommendation is that we approve this resolution. And I believe Vice Chair Severson, or sorry, Mueller, you have the resolution there. And I believe you also have to read it. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct. Thank you. All right. Thank you for that information. I will go ahead and read the resolution and then we'll ask for a motion in a second to approve that resolution. So this is the resolution approving Columbia Heights Public Schools Resolution of School Board Supporting Form A Application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, State of Minnesota as follows. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the District Number 13 Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the MSHSL Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school districts in recognizing, promoting and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Columbia Heights Public School Board of Education supports the district's application to the Minnesota State, Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. A motion to move that forward?
I'll move it.
Second. The motion by Molly, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All right, hearing done, Laura, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
And motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, next we will move on to the School Resource Officer Contract. And Director Hennickens will be presenting that for us.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board and Superintendent Senbik. This evening I have with me Executive Director Nuembe. And we have before you the School Resource Officer Contract. This was discussed, presented in detail at the previous school board meeting. Again, we've had a long history of our partnership with the Columbia Heights Police Department and collaborate with them on many efforts within our school community. And this evening we're seeking approval of that re-school resource contract for this next year from January 1st through December 31st.
Great. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the School Resource Officer Contract?
I'll move it.
Molly?
Second.
Second? Well, Laura, and discussion? All right, your questions?
I just want to point out that we are already a board that's currently down a member until the middle of December. And Chair Severson isn't here. So I do want to just make sure that we call attention to that fact that we only need three people to be a quorum. We have four here, even though we don't have two other members tonight. I just want to make sure that sort of that's, that's addressed as well, just something that's noted.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I just have a question. With that in mind, is there any type of reason why, why we, if we could postpone it till we're a full board? Or are we coming up across a contract deadline or?
So by full, just for clarification, by full board, you mean?
Is there a legal reason why we have to vote tonight?
I'm going to defer to one of you about the contract terms and notice that we have to give the city Columbia Heights?
Well, I would, I don't know what their timelines are, but the, they have to approve the contract after we approve the contract. So they have their process as well. And this is for the start of January 1st.
So ideally the contract would be approved prior to January 1st. Is there ever precedent that from before that's been set for having it start a few days at, end of the year? Or I know, I believe we made, there was adjustments that were made for the 2019, 2020 school year? Or was it the 20, I'm sorry, the 2020?
Not for the start.
No, not for the start, but there was adjustments, were there not adjustments after? Or due to the pandemic and not having people in school?
So the contract has, we've looked back at the previous agendas and it's come up in November. It's kind of been the typical cycle that, that, that the district has always done. Last year with students not on campus, there was an adjustment to the, I mean, there was a great reduction in payment. No payment with no students on campus.
Any other questions or conversation?
I mean, I have a couple of things. I had an opportunity to speak with Superintendent Senbik a little bit in depth about the contract as it's presented. A few things, so it says that DARE is part of the program with the contract. And Superintendent, you've clarified that that's not, even though that's what's present in this, what we see right now, that is not going to be in the contract that is going to be signed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then also on page 11, item 11, dress in a manner acceptable to school administration and chief of police. I know that families had inquired about whether or not it would be possible to have a non-uniformed and unarmed police officer in our schools as part of that contract. And I know that we briefly sort of discussed that or mentioned that at the end of our last regular meeting. Can you explain what that, what that means or what our understanding is of that? Or anyone?
I can, I can, I can address what I, what I know in conversations with the Columbia Heights Police Department. It's a small department and there are times when the school liaison leaves campus to support out in the community. And so the preference is to not be, you know, to wear the blue pants rather than the khaki pants, I guess, is the, is the difference. The main difference. And then that there, I'm not sure that, that the question about armed or unarmed has come up, but the, the question about the, what they're wearing has come up. So there's conversations, the preference on the part of the police department. My understanding is that they maintain the blue uniform.
I think we had a really robust discussion about it at our last meeting. And I think doing a little bit of a deeper dive, the last part that I would want to say about it is looking at the numbers of the respondents from the survey from November of 2020. When kids hadn't been in school since March of 2020 and most of them were doing distance learning at that time too. The world had changed pretty significantly and they had not been back in school yet. Looking at the numbers approximately roughly 27%, 27% of the high school body responded to the survey. And when directly asked about keeping SROs in school, half of those respondents said that they wanted to keep SROs in our school. So if we extrapolate that data a little bit, it means that approximately 15% of our high school body wanted SROs in school. And I think that because of sort of all of the things, you know, kids were not in school. They were not having those interactions day to day. Their interactions that they maybe had previously may have looked and felt different for students, faculty, for families. And I think that as we move forward, I would really like the district to take this next year and engage in a little bit more data gathering and trying to make sure that we have a more robust sample size so we can truly understand what the students and families want. I don't know that we can say it's overwhelming support with that small of a response. And so I think, you know, we have received a couple of emails and asking us to also take this next year and really deep dive into the data. And I think we're doing that already with the, with a lot of the PD work that we're asking our, our teaching staff to do. And as a board, we're doing that as well in our own equity work. And I think that this is just another place for us to really be asking hard questions and uncomfortable questions and having those conversations and making sure that we can say with fidelity that this is, this is a robust sample and this is what the majority of our student body wants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? I have a couple of comments, just a few notes. And I want to, as Member Grandland had talked about, acknowledge the people who did take the time to share with us their thoughts and the conversations that I think we've all been having in the community. And as Member Grandland said, we had a pretty robust conversation at the last meeting. A couple of things stood out to me in some of the feedback that I heard is, is one of those items is not focusing on if or why we can approve this contract, but if or why we should and the value add that, that it lends to the district or examining if there's not a value add for that. Also comments about reviewing the SRO partnership and that relationship through an equity lens. And I think as our board has, as our goal to really take that to heart, I appreciate those comments as well. Mary, I also agree with you in terms of the continually to involve our community members and our students in this process. And taking a look to see, is it working? And, and is it working for, for members of our community, you know, for our students in our schools, for our staff? And so continuing that survey, continuing the focus groups, continuing the conversations. I think I had asked at the last meeting of the principals who are part of that presentation, what are you hearing from the students? What are they talking about? What are they sharing as their impact? And I think we have to recognize as a board, as a district, as administration in doing something or making some decisions that may be the most right decision or may be right for a, a, a group of people, but may not be right for others. And what do we do to support the others that are not positively impacted by a decision that we make? That doesn't just refer to the student resource officer. That really involves all of the decisions that we make as a board and the policies that we set forth. There are people that are positively impacted by that and people that are negatively impacted by that. So what processes do we put in place to, to support those that may be negatively impacted by decisions that we make? The other part, the, it kind of goes with the analysis is, is understanding as a board, the whole, the, the statistical analysis, statistical analysis of non-responsive data. And really looking at what are, what, what does non-responsive data mean? And there's always assumptions that are being made, but there is some statistical approaches to that as well. So those are, are my comments and insight. Anything else from anybody else?
I just want to share just the conversations I've had. And I understand that there's different data out there, but where I'm coming from, I just want to make sure it's represented accurately is that from, from my perspective, the families of color, students of color that I've talked with, which is the majority of the students that I've engaged with about this conversation, have been in support of the SRO. And so I just want that to be known, that this is, you know, yes, it's not following the survey data, but I have engaged with many students that feel safer with an SRO in our schools. They did ask for some reassurance that it would be someone, you know, maybe cool like JP. We've all had that conversation, right? And we've had conversations with the police department that we do have, if there was ever, you know, a problem with the interactions with the students, that we do have some oversight over that. And that could be a conversation to be had and we've in fact done that before when we needed to. So I just want to make sure that that's on the record.
Thank you, Molly. Anything else?
Yeah, I was trying to figure out how to formulate kind of my, my, my thoughts on this. I really want to, I'm really hoping we're going to take this, this year here and really look at this and see if maybe there's more creative things that we can do to support our students. And just making sure that we're, we're keeping options open. And, and not just going to, this is the way it is. And going forward, we're going to constantly try to evolve because I, I, I am concerned that maybe some year in the future that we may not have as good of a fit. And just how, we want to make sure that this program doesn't depend upon one person being able to carry the program forward is that, is that the program needs to be in a solid base where it's beneficial for our entire community and it's not dependent upon a single person. You know, or a certain single personality or a single style that, that in and of itself, that it or a single style that, that in and of itself, that it is, it is beneficial always. And I'm very pleased to know that the, that the resource officers will be participating also in our, in our personal development. So that, that, I think that is a, a really good thing and I'm, just always try to do better.
Thank you, Laura. Anything else? Okay, right now we do have a motion to approve the school resource officer contract. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. I also want to acknowledge the folks that came to our meeting today and appreciate the, those that came and shared that information with us as well. So thank you. Next we have the Northeast Metro 916 Joint Powers Agreement, and that is Director Hennigan's.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik this evening for presenting for approval. This was presented in detail at the previous school board meeting. The Northeast Metro Intermediate School District 916 updated joint powers agreement. So the original joint powers agreement as presented before was original to the organization. And we've been collaborating with the other school districts and our legal councils on updating that joint powers agreement and had, having this for you for approval, this resolution.
Great, thank you. And we do have a abbreviated version of the amendment of the resolution, so thank you. And so I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion in a second to move that forward. This is the first amended and restated agreement for the Northeast Metro Intermediate School District number 916. This agreement effective the first day of July 2021 between independent school districts numbers 12, 13, 14, 16, 282, 621, 622, 623, 624, 831, 832, 833, and 834, here and referred to as participating school districts as follows. Witnessed whereas the participating school districts are duly organized independent school districts for the purpose of providing public school education for persons within their geographical boundaries. And whereas each participating school district is interested in cooperating with other school districts in acquiring lands and buildings, organizing, establishing, financing, maintaining, and operating a special intermediate school district on a site or sites to be selected by the school board of such special intermediate school district. And whereas the participating school districts are eligible to organize and create a special intermediate school district pursuant to chapter 75 laws of the, excuse me, chapter 775 laws of the 1969, the enabling legislation Minnesota statutes 136D point 71 through 76 and 471 point 59 and other applicable statutes for such purpose. And those participating school districts who are signatory, signatory heretofore are the initial participants in such special intermediate school district. Now therefore, each of the participating school districts here, heretofore hereby agree that the other participating school districts heretofore as detailed in the full amended restated agreement. Thank you.
Apprehensive.
We have a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Seconded. Seconded by Mary. Thank you. Laura, will you please do a roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry, do I, discussion, any discussion?
Well done on reading that.
Thank you. I'm glad that that was the amended version.
I, I'm, I'm just glad that we, we finally got this, this done. Working with a like 40-year-old joint powers agreement was, it could create potential issues in the future, so it's nice to know exactly what we, what part, what portion of the assets we own, because we do own parts of those assets, and what potential liabilities that there may be for districts that are involved in it. So I'm very, very happy with all of the work that went into this and how many times it went back to the drawing board. It's very much appreciated. I, I know just how much, how much work it was.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Laura, now will you do the roll call vote, please?
Louis.
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. And Director Hennigan's is still with us for the high school roof project.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Mueller, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbik. The, as presented at the last school board meeting, we had opened up our bids for our roof project and presented the results of those. And this evening seeking approval to move forward with our low bid or responsible bidder, Peterson Brothers Roofing, we're replacing, it's basically the west side of the building, our wing of the building, section C1, C2, C3, and C4. And that base bid is $738,700, very close to what the bid was from last year for the east side, the east wing of the roof. So this is funded through long-term facility maintenance dollars and, and budgeted for.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the bids for the high school roof replacement project?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura? All right, it's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
Just a comment, seven bids. That's wonderful.
Yes, very active bidders the last 18 months to two years.
Excellent.
And the question that Lauren usually asks, and all of them have been, are all reputable with the, with, can do this type of project.
Yes, Peterson Brothers has won several of our bids in recent history for roofs and they do, do also some repairs for us. So we're very familiar with Peterson Brothers. They do a great job.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, this is being presented by me, I believe, will be asked to approve the board organizational meeting, referred to as the first Monday in January. For us, it's the first Tuesday in January for our organizational meeting. Oh, that's it. Okay. You know, we went over that at our last meeting as well. Can I get a motion to approve the organizational meeting?
So moved.
Mary?
Second.
And seconded by Molly. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next we have our school board election clerk, Dawn Hoyum, to present our resolution to combine precincts for special elections.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Stenbik, members of the board. At the previous meeting, I presented information about a resolution to combine the polling places in case of a special election. This would be a cost savings to the district, and tonight I am seeking approval of this resolution, and this is an annual resolution.
Great, thank you. I will, my fourth month tonight, I will read this resolution and then ask for a motion to move this forward. This is the resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designated hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide county or municipal election. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 13, state of Minnesota as follows. One, pursuant to the Minnesota statutes, section 205A dot 11, the precinct and polling places for school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Two, pursuant to Minnesota statute, section 205A dot 11, when no other election is being held in the school district, the board may designate combined polling places at which the voters in those precincts may vote in the special election, excuse me, may vote in the school district election. Three, by December 31st of each year, the school board must designate by resolution combined polling places. The combined polling places designated in the resolution are the polling places for the following calendar year unless a change is made. One, pursuant to section 204B dot 172, or because a polling place has become unavailable. Four, if the school board designated combined polling places pursuant to this subdivision, polling places must be designated throughout the district, taking into account both geographical distribution and population distribution. A combined polling place must be at a location designated for use as a polling place by county or municipality. Five, in school districts that have organized into separate school board members elections district under section 205A dot 12, a combined polling place for a school general election must be arranged so that it does not include more than one board member election district. Combination name, independent school district precinct one, Valley View Elementary School, polling place 849th Avenue Northeast, comprised of city precinct Columbia Heights Precinct one, Columbia Heights Precinct two, Columbia Heights Precinct seven, Columbia Heights Precinct eight, Fridley, is that Ward?
Ward one, yes.
Ward one, precinct four, Fridley Ward three, precinct four, and Hilltop Precinct one. Independent School District Precinct two, Highland Elementary School, 1549th Avenue Northeast, Columbia Heights Precinct three, Columbia Heights Precinct four, Columbia Heights Precinct five, Columbia Heights Precinct six, Fridley Ward two, precinct three, Fridley Ward two, precinct four. Six, pursuant to the Minnesota statutes 205A dot 09, the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections between the hours of 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM. Seven, the clerk is directed to prepare a map illustrating the boundaries of each combined precinct, to post the map of the combined precincts in the administrative offices of the school district, and to file a copy of the map and a certified copy of this resolution with the county auditor for each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part. Eight, as required by Minnesota statute, section 204B dot 16, subdivision 1A, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written notice of new polling place locations to all registered voters in the school district whose school district polling place locations have been changed. The notice must be a non-foreable notice mailed at least 25 days before the date of the first election to which it will apply. I get a motion to move that resolution forward. Or to approve that resolution, please?
So moved.
Go ahead. Molly? Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Laura. Any discussion?
Just clarification questions. Basically, this runs right up Central Avenue.
Correct. There's just one precinct in Fridley that has a little bit on the west side of Central.
Okay. And the, and this is a yearly resolution?
Correct.
And the need for this is, is that should we need a special election, this would reduce our cost tremendously because if we are not on a county or state ballot, there isn't an election currently running, that we would actually have to staff all of the polling places.
Correct. It would shrink the 13 precincts down to two.
Two, yes. Considerable savings.
Considerable.
Thank you. Good questions. Any other questions or comments? Great, thank you. Laura, since this is a resolution, can you please do a roll call?
Louis.
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
And Mueller? Aye. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lot of resolutions. It felt like the old Zoom days.
Honestly.
Where every single one was a roll call.
Any board topics?
I have one, I forgot to mention, between the last meetings, there was a whole vaccination clinic which happened, which I don't know if anybody else knows this, but our superintendent learned how, and also Director Stunkel, learned how to make balloon animals, which are still at my house. So nice work. Yep, yep. I think it's pretty amazing, the turnout that we had and how it felt so warm and welcoming and so many families were so excited about it. And I think especially with the holiday coming up and knowing that case rates are high around the state, I know that community members have really expressed so much relief and joy at having that be so accessible, I mean, number one, finally accessible for the under 12 crowd, and then also so easy to register. And we even had the virtual high school teacher dressed up like a syringe, which was amazing, like, like a COVID vaccine. So I think that that's really fantastic. I know people are looking forward to the second clinic, which is happening on the 11th of December. And just so many people have expressed gratitude on that and especially again with the holidays coming up, I think it's just a wonderful thing, so. And also I wanted to make sure that there was a time for you to say any other others.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Vice Chair, on that December 11th clinic, just a point of clarification is first doses can also attend that clinic, so it's not only limited to second dose. So if there are others that are, you know, five to 11, okay.
Thank you. Other board topics? Okay, I apologize to you guys, I have three. Real quick, we had the community, Subcommittee on Community Engagement at our last meeting and pursuant to our rules, we give an update at the next board meeting. So just to give an update on our Subcommittee, Member Louis and I met with our student representative, really talked about her ideas for what has worked and what hasn't worked in terms of engaging in our community. She talked about the community at large as well as our student community, had some really great ideas, which we'll be talking, moving forward with Superintendent Stenbik and, and the rest of the board, including maybe an opportunity for the board members to get into the high school with some treats and maybe do like a lunch with school board members, really giving an opportunity for students to come in a more informal way to, to share thoughts and concerns and, and learn about school board members. Talked about using QR codes and really reaching out to our, our students. So prepare for more information coming from the Subcommittee. Molly, did you have anything else you wanted to add on those conversations?
No, I just was going to highlight the QR codes. I think just the excitement that she had that people saw the QR codes and really were seeing school board member information, like about us and connecting with them in the building and the energy that that kind of created, so.
Yeah, she, she pretty much told us that they weren't going to read our emails or letters, but if we put a QR code out there, they'd link them to something, that they would actually look at that. So just, her perspective was, was fantastic. So more to come from the Subcommittee on Community Engagement. The second piece that we wanted to just talk about as we prepare for upcoming meetings and conversations regarding our equity statement and really focusing on, on what that looks like. And I think as we had our meeting previously, a very, you know, detailed conversation about that, is what direction the board is looking to go in. And looking at, there's the equity statement or there's basically a strategic roadmap. And what's our, you know, from what I'm gathering, we're looking at that equity statement. Our strategic roadmap expires in 2024. So I think looking at, you know, kind of those are two very, two different things in my mind. And I don't know if you wanted to, anybody had any comments on that, but just some thoughts as we prepare for the next conversations. Superintendent, two of you.
I've given this a lot of thought and I can say, I'm, I'm, I want to do, I want to make sure that we're doing this right. And not that I think that we won't, it's just, I'm at a loss for words here. But rather than, than just a letter of intent, that I almost think it needs to be written out like a policy, you know, this is the why, this is the how, you know, I mean, you know, it's something along, I'm thinking more in terms of like how we would write out a policy rather than just a simple letter because that's, that's a little bit more grounded in, in, in what our intent is and maybe perhaps how we can accomplish things.
And I will say, and that's obviously we are bringing it, I'm bringing it up here so that we can have a little bit of a more conversation because we obviously can't talk to each other about this outside of these venues. But I look at, definitely looking as our, our strategic roadmap, you know, as we, we look to see what the next see what the next steps are with there. I think we've all learned a lot over the years, and that definitely is a process of developing that with stakeholders and community members. And there was, if you guys remember, there's info sessions and meetings and really getting some information out there. I look at, originally when we brought this up, was having the board provide an equity statement to really talk about what our commitment was as a board, which then gives the superintendent the support and the direction to then do what needs to be done on a management level to move our equity goals forward. And so not necessarily looking at all of the, all of the step one, step two, step three, step four, but the statement of, this is what we're doing, this is what we support, and this is why we're doing that, which then gives her the direction to carry that process out forward.
Yeah, and I agree with the, with moving forward with an equity statement. I was the one that I think brought this up when we were talking about doing a letter, and then it kind of shifted. And truly, I think the goal here would be just to really express to our community, stakeholders, students, parents, staff, admin, that we want to move this district forward in any way possible through an equity lens. Acknowledge what hasn't worked, where we're at, and how we want to move forward as a board. And so, I mean, I fully support just doing an equity statement, because that's something that we can do. I don't know how quickly we could do all of the things. I understand completely what you're saying, and I think it should be an "and," and I think those are the things that move forward. But to me, making this statement is big, and it's that first thing, and then all of these other things kind of fall in line with it, in my mind.
Oh, I'm more, I'm more talking about format. You know, that's kind of where I'm at with, because if we had a, you know, a format, like I said, you know, similar to how a policy is written, okay, but in kind of a statement form, you know, this is the rationale, this is, you know, and this is what our intent is. This is where we need to work, you know, and these are, these are our goals, and we are moving forward.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, it sounds like you want, you're thinking of like making this feel more formal.
Yes.
Okay, because that's, that's, you guys are talking, it sounds like you're talking about the same thing.
Yep.
You just want to make it really, really formal so that it, it fits with the gravitas of what we're trying to do, and also explain it in a way for the community to easily, like for it to feel accessible to everybody? Does that?
Well, I think that when we're talking about drastically, not not, with great intent is changing the direction, that it needs to be a very, this is not an informal conversation, and it needs to be approached from a very methodical and very formal way, you know. I mean, and to a great, a great deal, it really makes us accountable, you know, in that kind of a fashion. Or maybe I'm just being overly sensitive about it, but I know, I just know that, I don't want this to be just like any equity statement. You know, because anybody could, I could print up, I could print up, you know, 20 equity statements probably within 10 minutes off of Google, and the organizations that have submitted them are probably not living up to their ideals. You know, even though they look great, you know, they say all the right things.
And I completely understand and appreciate what you're saying. My only concern is like, moving into that deeper, as a board, what are we limited to? Without, how does that not cross?
I'm not talking about procedures or anything.
Okay.
Just in the formality and how it's presented.
Okay.
You know, I just, this, this really, really, really needs to be done, and I want to do it right.
Yeah.
Because not doing, not doing, not doing this well will, will, will make it twice as hard to do it correctly.
Great, thank you. Any other thoughts?
I do want to share that I had some conversations with several people, people in education, people of color, and I know that we acknowledged at the last meeting, we talked about having a facilitator come in, and, you know, and I understand everyone's going to have different perspectives, but I just don't want us to get hung up on that part, because yes, we have to acknowledge that we are seven white women sitting at the table doing this, but that still speaks volumes when we move forward with this, and to not take that away. Like, yes, we want to make sure we have the language and everything appropriate, we want to make sure, but I think we can all do that work before we come to the table, so that we have that. I don't want us to lose the value of what we are, where we're at, and where we know we've been with having someone come in from the outside. And so, like, I understand both, and I give value to both, but I just, like I said, that's just something that I've really done a lot of digging into and looked at, so.
Thank you. I appreciate the additional discussion. I think it's helpful for us to just circle back before we have our next meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
The last board topic I have is just a reminder, Jake said it, but the middle school musical is happening before our next board meeting in December, so December 9th through 12th, Willy Wonka Junior from our Columbia Academy students. Anything else? Anybody else have any board topics? All right, then I will adjourn the meeting at 9:18.